Okay, so to start with, we're gonna start with the agenda. Would somebody like to make an approval for our regular agenda for the night's meeting?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, all items with an asterisk are considered to be a routine by the city council. Will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, and which the event will be moved from the general order of business and considered separately in the normal sequence of the agenda. Is the motion accept the consent?
Vice Mayor, I would ask that item six M be removed from the consent agenda and moved to a vote, and I will recuse myself from that vote as it is chamber business.
Okay, item six N is gonna be moved and Jackie's recused herself. Any other items?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to the minutes, minutes approval for minutes of regular council meeting on January 14th and the city council work session on February 6th, the motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We're gonna move on to item four A. This is the DAV has a presentation night for the city council, and we're gonna ask Dave Deason and Jason Bridle, please come forward.
I'll just ask for Dave's carry.
We just die candy now.
Okay, well, and once again, I'll try and do the Reader's Digest version, so I can get quite wordy. We're happy to announce that we have another $25,000 check to present to the city for the handicapped dock system. Met with Kelsey and Sean earlier today to put a final plan to this dock. We made some adjustments to it, looking at cooperating hopefully with the city with some of their ventures in a fishing pier and those type of things. So we're actually looking at pulling the fishing pier off the end of ours to make it more accessible for someone to enter a boat or a pontoon or something of that nature. And our monies would go to assist the city in putting a fishing pier out. We're also still looking at trying to get a handicapped swimming area, and that part is still in a design phase. This check brings the total dollar amount, I believe, $96,000 that we've presented. This $25,000 came as a donation from the Berry Foundation, of which Jason has been working in depth with them. And we're now out trying to seek matching grants or donations to that money. So I'll shut up at.
You know, thank you, Sean. I like that it's morphed a little bit that we're gonna have things in three different spaces, 'cause having just the dock, putting all of it, kayaks and everything on one dock, it's gonna get awfully busy, and then you got fishing lines and everything. So, you know, incorporating in part with the fishing pier and part with the dock, and then even over by the Holiday Inn access, now we're gonna have kayak launches there. So I think this is great, 'cause it's gonna be accessible, you know, throughout. And I think that's huge, so, thank you.
I'm gonna have Matt Bokey to go ahead and make a motion, accept that money down, then I'm gonna come down and receive it from you, so.
I thought I got to go receive it, too.
You go ahead.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept this $25,000 check on behalf of the DAV to help with the ADA dock system.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, I'm gonna come on down there. Thank you guys so much, and there's gonna be a lot of handicap people that are gonna enjoy this, and thank you for all your work to raise all this money for us.
Picture, picture up.
Two additional quick plugs.
Oh, yeah.
The green bins that you see at the American Legion and at Noah's Furniture Kitty Corner from the VFW, that is our major fundraiser. We collect clothes out of those bins once a week. We also have bins in New York Mills, Perm, and Fraser. We make that run. That brings us somewhere between 40 and 50,000 dollars a year, about 150,000 pounds of clothes that we pull out of those bins. Please bag it when you put it in there, it's cold out and you're pulling out a piece at a time. The other item, in the fall, we have our fall banquet sponsored by the VFW, and it's a good time, unfortunately, you gotta listen to me as the emcee, but we get through it. So those are our two major fundraisers, so please help us where you can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a couple people, that is, we're gonna have come up and speak for us, they don't have to wait all night, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Stern for items six A.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We have, yesterday, Public Works Committee met, and there was a discussion regarding organic material recycling. And so today, we have Steve Skug and Ari DeVries here to speak on the composting.
Few faces here I haven't seen for a while, it's been a few years. I'm Steve Skug, I'm the Environmental Services Director for Becker County. Recently.
If you could speak right in that mic, so we can all hear you.
Sure, sorry about that. Recently, we got a grant from the MPCA to start organics, a collection of organics. We're gonna start composting or collecting them so they can be composted. And really, what our goal is, is to reduce the amount of food, organic waste going into the waste stream. And we have a PowerPoint, let's see. Becker County has been searching over the years, trying to figure out more ways to divert items out of the waste stream, to minimize the amount that's going to either a resource recovery facility in Perm or to landfills. And so we generate approximately, in the county, about 21,000 tons of garbage a year. That's based on what we generated last year that we were sending off. About 10,000 to 11,000 tons goes to Perm, that's incinerated, and the rest of it's going to a landfill, as you can see these numbers here. And so our recycling program is, when we first got into this number of years ago, grew quite rapidly when we went to single stream recycling and when we got those blue bins that we scattered around the county. Since then, it's kind of flattened, and we're looking for ways to increase that. So we, and as you remove more things out of the waste stream, of course, then what you have there gets to be more condensed. And so organics is kind of one of those things that's kind of the next thing to progress to. Other counties around here have had some pilot projects where they've introduced this, and we've, we've taken some of the ideas that they've had, and we're gonna try to make that work here. We have talked to the City Lake Park and Audubon, and they're interested in starting this, and I'm assuming they will probably move this over to Fraser as well, so. Right now, in the county, we divert about 10,000 tons a year through our current programs, and of course, we're trying to expand that, so. Do you have the clicker?
Yeah.
So these are some of the things that we're gonna talk about. About 25% of our waste stream is organics now. Of that, you're not gonna recover all this, but we're hoping that we can get it to between 5% and 10% of our waste stream eventually removed in the form of organics. And what this will do is initially, and we'll, I don't know, we'll talk about this a little bit later on, too, but initially, when we roll this out, we'll use our current program that we have, we have trucks that go and service our container system, and we'll bring the stuff out to our landfill, and we'll put it in trucks, and we're gonna send that to a permitted facility for composting. If this grows enough, well, then eventually, we would build our own composting facility here at just north of Detroit Lakes. What's accepted, Ari gave you a handout that shows you all the things that can be composted. Really, what you're talking about, all types of fruits, vegetables, food waste, soiled containers. Also, eventually, we'd like to get businesses to start using compostable footwear, plates, that type of thing. Also, your normal things like coffee ground, anything that can break down, so. We're planning on rolling this out this summer, and we've already got the grant approved, we just gotta finish up with the paperwork with MPCA. And that's gonna cover purchasing the items that we need for this. It's gonna be some containers, it's gonna be dumpsters, it's gonna be attachments that we're gonna use on our trucks, it's gonna pay for the collection, so we're not gonna charge anything to people to use this. So we're gonna have some free community drop-off sites, we talked about this in the committee meeting yesterday. We have four public drop sites here in the city, and we could put them at four, we weren't, and then we'll also have a drop site in the other cities as well. We're gonna have a business pickup program where it'll be a prescription, where our staff will go out and talk to businesses that are interested in doing this. We'll provide the containers, we'll provide the collection services. And also, we'll try to move this into the schools as well. So that the public, at the community drop-off sites, this will be a place where people, hopefully, when they're bringing their recyclables there, they can bring their food waste. We're gonna get, we're gonna purchase pails or bins along with compostable liners that they can put in there, the idea being that when they bring their food waste there, you just pick up the whole liner and drop it in there, and we'll take it from there. We're gonna be doing the service every week, depending on how this rolls out. This is our first time, of course, so if we need to service it twice a week, then we can do that, 'cause it's not that far for us to travel and these trucks to do that. We're planning on building a shelter that we can put the bins in, and the idea being that it'll help keep snow and rain and that type of thing out of there as well. The business and school pickups, that's something we're gonna be reaching out to businesses here fairly soon, with the idea that if you have a summer, a business that's really based on tourism and summer usage, hopefully, we can get into them before summer really takes hold, so that they have a chance to maybe change their practices or work with them to implement this. Let's see, school pickups, we did put in a grant, some funding to give them, to buy stainless steel tables or places where they can do the sorting in the schools. So, anything else, I guess, on that?
I think that's it.
That's about it, does anybody have any questions?
We did have quite a bit of discussion on this, like you said here yesterday, and next month, we're gonna bring it back to the council for approval to go ahead with the program. We had some questions that you're gonna be answering for, and so we'll be set to go on that, so storage and so forth, but we appreciate your presentation and work, and glad that you got the grant money.
Sure, thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for coming tonight. The next person. Oh, just a question, Sam, do you wanna come up front here? We know that you're here today for a special event application for the Detroit Lakes Chamber of Commerce, and your art in the park is gonna be on Sunday, July 27th, is that correct?
Correct.
And it's, what time is your park gonna be open for this?
The art in the park will run from nine to three, but we'll be there at 5:30 in the morning to help with the vendors to check in and help them set up.
Okay.
And then we should be out of there by 6 o'clock at the latest.
Okay, very good, and as usual, you've done a great job in the past, I'm sure it'll continue on that, so thank you tonight for coming through on it. I'm gonna go ahead and have Mike Stern go ahead and make a motion on that.
Okay, so we have item six M, the consideration to approving a special event applicant, application for the Detroit Lakes Regional Chamber of Commerce to have art in the park on July 27, 2025, and I make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, and we'll see you at art in the park.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move down to Community Development Committee, and I'll call on Wendy Spry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Pardon me, item five A, our committee discussed these items in five A through C. Five A is consideration to a resolution setting a public hearing for the proposed vacation of the utility easements on lots 11 and 12 of Block Four of the rearrangement of Detroit Lakes North Industrial Park First Edition. I believe it's pretty straightforward and doing exactly what it says it's meant to do, but Larry, do you have anything you want to include?
This is a request to vacate the utility easement between lots 11 and 12 for Gooden Company, and we'll hear about that at the public hearing, but basically, they're buying two lots, and they need to remove those utility easements so they can construct their building.
And that hearing would be set for the March council?
Correct.
Correct, okay. All right, our committee reviewed this and we're unanimous in moving forward, and I so move that we pass the resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for consideration of the resolution setting a public hearing for proposed vacation of utility easement on lots 11 and 12, Block Four, the Detroit Lakes North Industrial Park First Edition for Gooden Company. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Item five B, consideration to a resolution setting a public hearing, again, for the proposed vacation of all drainage easements on Lot One, Block One of Highland Estates at 1321 Highland Drive. Our committee reviewed this and are recommending setting the hearing and moving forward. And Larry, do you have any additional information on that?
Again, it's a public hearing to eliminate those drainage easements that were approved on the original plat. The project has changed, and we will deal with the stormwater drainage through our land disturbance permit, and we won't need the drainage easements that exist there now.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, and this is for consideration to a resolution setting a public hearing for proposed vacation of all drainage easements, Lot One and Highland Drive Estates at 1320 Highland Drive. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Item five C is consideration to a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Marty's Acres at 2577 U.S. Highway 10. Our committee reviewed this, and I move that we move for that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, consideration of resolution approving a preliminary plat of Marty's Acres at 2577 U.S. Highway 10. We have a motion, a second, and is there any discussion on this? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Anything else, Wendy?
Nothing further.
Okay, let's move on to Public Works, and Mike Stern.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, so we have item six B, consideration to a resolution accepting a preliminary engineering report for Shorewood Drive and setting an improvement hearing for March 11, 2025 at 5:00 PM. Yesterday, the Public Works Committee reviewed the preliminary engineering report for a full-depth reclamation for Shorewood Drive, which will be further discussed and opened to the public for discussion on May 11. So I so move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, for a consideration of resolution accepting a preliminary engineering report for Shorewood Drive and setting an improvement hearing on March 11, 2025. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Next, we have item six C, consideration to a resolution accepting a preliminary engineering report for Southwood Shores Estate and setting an improvement hearing for March 11, 2025 at 5:00 PM as well. The Public Works Committee discuss, got a chance to review the preliminary engineering report. This is for the new development south of Shorewood Drive, or South Shore Drive, and so I so move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, this is for consideration to resolution accepting a preliminary engineering report for South Shores Estates and setting a proven setting, hearing for March 11, 2025 at 5 o'clock. We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Next, we have item six D, and after some further discussion with the applicant, events by Brittany, that one has been decided to be tabled at this time, and so I make a motion to table.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, the table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is okay to table.
The next item, six E, consideration to approving a special event application for the Holmes Theater to have the annual street fair on Washington Avenue on May 30th through 31st of 2025. There was some additional discussion on this because Sean King was able to present some calculations for some costs associated with blocking off Highway 10. Over the last couple of years, the MINDOT has elevated the requirements for blocking off that. It used to be people would just go pick up the cones afterwards, that can't be done anymore, so there are added costs to that. And because of that, the committee discussed how to address that. There are basically two options. The estimated cost for the blocking off Highway 10 is about $1,600. So if the street fair wants to bear that cost, that can be left up to them. Otherwise, if they, the alternative would be to allow traffic to still flow down that short block of Washington Avenue between Highway 10 and Front Street and Veterans Drive, or, and then allow one of those side streets to have traffic flow. So just to sum it up, they either pay a $1,600, roughly a $1,600 fee to, you know, block it off completely or allow traffic flow down there. So they would have to redo some of their footprint, you know, on one of those two side streets and allow traffic to be there. So that would be one thing that they'd have to address, but we'd like to give them either option so they can move forward on it accordingly. So, so again, consideration to approving a special event application for the Holmes Theater to have the annual street fair on Washington Avenue, May 30 through 31st, 2025, with either paying an estimated $1,600 fee for Highway 10, blocking off Highway 10, or to allow for traffic down Washington to Veterans. So I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, and this is for consideration to approving the special event for Holmes Theater to have an annual street fair on Washington Avenue from May 30 and 31st, and as Mike said, we're gonna give them a trace whether they wanna spend the extra $1,600 charge that we're being charged, or else not to go forward on the Front Street area. So is there any discussion on that before we vote on this? If not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries then.
Okay, and then we have item six F, and this is a consideration of the authorization for a request for proposals for construction management services.
And that, and that.
Yep, yep, yep.
All right.
Management services for Washington Park renovations, and the committee discussed, and we're tabling it at this time.
Okay, very, thank you. And let's see.
Thanks for catching.
And look, is there anything else in that you have? Looks like you've pretty well got it all covered, then.
We do have to vote on table.
Okay, we have to vote on that, so all in favor of that vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Do you have anything else, then? Kelsey, did you have anything that you wanna bring up at that time on this, or?
No, we're just trying to figure out who seconded that tabling.
I move for approval, for tabling.
Who made the second?
We didn't have a second, but I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a second, then.
I got eight of them.
Okay, there we got the second, okay, all right.
Everybody.
Okay. So, looks like we've got everything on that, then.
Yes.
Okay, let's, I'm looking down here, and let's move on to finance, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item seven A is a consideration to approving a pool use agreement with the DLCCC in the school district. Peter was here earlier discussing this from the CC. They think it's a favorable agreement. Mr. Ramstead reviewed the contract and brought it in line with all the other special event applic, it's not a lease, it's a what? Use agreement, thank you very much. Everybody who's in favor of this was passed unanimously, so I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and this is for consideration to approving a pool use agreement with the LCC in the school district. We've got a motion, a second, is there any discussion on this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Seven B, consideration accepting a DMRA annual fundraiser, financial statement, excuse me, an independent accountant audit reports for year ending April 30th, 2024. Tom unfortunately was not be able to with us tonight, as he is home ill. Kelsey did review these documents, everything looked up and up on that, so I would move these for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, and this is for consideration accepting the DMRA annual financial statement, independent accountants audit report for the year ending April 30, 2024. We have a motion, a second, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven C, consideration to approving the American Legion campground rates for 2025. To give a little bit of background on this, the American Legion approached this in January with a recommended increase of, I wanna say it was $50 or $100 in January. We asked them for more information to go and compare themselves to other campgrounds in the area. They approached us again yesterday at the finance meeting, excuse me, just this afternoon at the finance committee, and they came back with a recommendation of $100 again, did more homework, compared that. There was a lot of discussion at this. What the committee unanimously landed on was an increase of $200 for the 25-year, as well as Kelsey and city staff to meet with the Legion campground to discuss their CIP plan and what that would look like. Like I said, it was unanimous recommendation to increase at $200 for 2025, and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, and this is for consideration approving the American Legion campground rates for 2025, is a $200 increase for this coming year. Is there any discussion on this?
Just a question, it's $100 for each seasonal site, the smaller, older lots would increase? I mean, the increase is still 200 per?
Per seasonal.
Per seasonal, okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Item seven D, consideration to resolution approving, accepting the offer from MPFA to purchase a general obligation water revenue note, series 2025A, in the original aggregate principal out of $9,883,495, providing for its issuance and authorization of execution of the bond and project loan agreement. To dumb this down, what it is, is the loan for the new water tower for that $9 million. The interest rate is 2.281, so I would highly recommend that we approve this at that great interest rate. It was unanimously approved at the finance committee, and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to approve the financing of $9,883,495 at an interest rate of 2.281 interest rate, and I don't think anybody's gonna vote against that, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Item seven E, consideration to an authorization request for proposal for architectural design services of pavilion. Kelsey, I'm gonna hand this over to you, please.
Vice Mayor and Council, this was emailed out earlier today. I do have hard copies, too, if you'd like a copy. This is a similar process like we did for the police department, so we're requesting proposals from qualifying firms to provide architectural and design services related to the pavilion project. The deadline for the proposals is March 21st. So once we receive the proposals, we'll review them, narrow them down to a list of, kind of, finalists to interview, then we'll interview those and have council take action. The timeline that I have in there is maybe by May, make a selection. Again, maybe a bit of an aggressive schedule, but that's the current plan.
This was discussed at finance committee, we were all in unanimous approval with this, so I move.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, for consideration for the authorization of request for proposal for architectural design service for the pavilion in their city park. This is part of their local option sales tax that is approved for $17.3 million. So is there any discussion on that? We've got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven F, consideration to resolution amending the 2025 budget. We noticed with the budget that we approved in December, there was some numbers omitted there on the revenue side. We accounted our auditors, who suggested we do a resolution amending the 2025 budget. The overall numbers for the budget does not change. This was just errors of entries that were now added in the backside. So Heidi, anything else to add? else to add?
Well, that pretty much sums it up. It was just a clerical, clerical error on my end to inadvertently omit some revenue figures in one of our funds. They are, however, accounted for in our levy and elsewhere in the budget. So sort of a formality to make the budget reflect our intentions.
So to stay on the right side of the auditors, we thought this was the best approach. We discussed this at finance committee. Uh, everybody was in agreement with this and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. And this is for consideration of resolution amending the 2025 budget. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
It's all your Vice Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to, uh, public, uh, safety. Aaron Dolan?
Thanks, Your Honor. Item 8A, consideration to a resolution adopting the Becker County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, we discussed this. We all unanimously agreed and I still move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, for a consideration of resolution adopting the Becker County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Uh, what's going on? The liquor, that Mike Stern?
Yes, Vice Mayor, the Liquor Gambling Control Committee met at 4 o'clock and we have no action items, but we did have a discussion regarding a letter that was presented to us by Michael Mund. Um, and it was in the packet, but, uh, so everyone in the council has had a chance to review it. Uh, the, the big part of his request is that he, he would like us to reconsider how we have our ordinances structured at this point. And although we all have a general feeling of, uh, you know, we, we feel for his issue, uh, we didn't feel as a collective group, uh, from the committee that it was worth revisiting the ordinances at this time, especially with a lot of unknowns that are out there even at the state level. So, uh, again, no action item, but, uh, just, we did discuss it and, you know, we'll keep, uh, we'll remain aware of, of the ordinances as they, how they are affected by the state.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, report on the discussion. Is there anything else that you have?
Nothing else.
Okay, let's go on to item 10. Do you have anything for public utilities?
Nothing there, sir.
Okay. And Renell, can you maybe give us an update how we're coming on that water tower?
Sure. Cold weather slowed them down a little bit, but as soon as it warms back up, they're going to continue on the foundations. Uh, all the pilings are in. They're going to fill the pilings with concrete. Then they'll come back and start doing the underground concrete work, get that built up. So hopefully that'll be above ground before spring actually gets here. And then they'll start working on the column, start going up with it. So I would anticipate by early summer, we'll start seeing upward mobile, upward movement on that water tower.
Okay, thank you very much for that update. Okay, let's go over to the mayor's agenda. We have, uh, item A, consideration, the appointment of Ron Ziemling to the joint planning board for the, uh, initial term. Is there a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And then likewise, on item B, consideration of appointment of Wendy Spry to the joint planning board for the initial term.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Uh, item C, we've got a consideration of reappointment of Mark Bjorki to the Tersin Bureau. Mr. Bjorki has completed the term of, of vacated by Russ at Lipcott, uh, which expired on March 31st and is eligible to be appointed for his first term. I need a motion to appoint him.
So moved.
Got a motion, is a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Uh, let's go down to item E, uh, consideration of reappointment of Liz Foster Anderson to the planning commission. Ms. Foster Anderson has completed her second term, which expired on March 31st and is eligible to reappoint her for the third term.
So moved.
We got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Uh, Your Honor, you missed item 5D.
Uh, that one has been postponed, postponed for now.
Oh.
It'll be back, uh, next month.
Okay, thank you.
Still got, uh, still thinking about joining. Let's see what else is coming up here. Uh, want to call on, um, the city administrator?
Vice Mayor and Council, yeah, just, uh, under kind of information announcements. Um, again, we had our work session last Thursday talking about Westlake Drive Phase 3 and some of the beachfront improvements. Uh, we're looking at March 4th to have a public open house, uh, be a very similar presentation to what, uh, the council probably saw last Thursday. Uh, the plan is to start at 5 o'clock. Um, if you haven't, uh, participated in one of our open houses before, usually what we do is we put up some exhibits on the walls. Uh, we have people come in, kind of meander around, have some informal discussion, and then we settle in and we do a presentation. And then we provide, uh, opportunity for questions and feedback. And that usually kind of concludes the evening. So, um, as of right now, March 4th at 5 o'clock is the plan. Uh, the other thing, under 14A, uh, just want to recognize that the city, um, we had to renew our bicycle friendly community status and we once again were awarded the bronze level certificate for that. Uh, Mark Champ in our office put a lot of work into that. It's, 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 uh, trying to pick my words carefully. It's a really long, arduous, robust application. And, uh, Mark did a good job putting it all together and everyone had to chip in. Sean, Larry, uh, the city engineer all had put information into it and he assembled it and got our, um, bronze level renewed. So.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the city staff want to say anything? Okay. And is there any citizens in the audience that like to speak? If not, looks like we're coming to the end here. So, uh, Jay, you have anything?
No, I'm good, sir.
Nope.
Okay.
Matt? Uh, one thing for Mr. King. Any update on poles and holes or Polar Fest or activities?
Uh, Vice Mayor and Council, no. No updates. Um, I did hear they did have a successful poles and holes. Um, but no, all the events have been going off really well and, uh, now we're looking forward to the polar plunge and providing then some barricades and cones for that event.
Perfect. Nothing else, Your Honor.
Jackie?
No, nothing.
Okay, I want to say that we had a lot of stuff in town this past weekend and we had Group 412. They had their flying kites down there by the pavilion on Sunday. And of course, the curling arena was pretty busy out there. And Friday, Saturday and Sunday, a 28 teams in town curling. I even got to see a couple sweepers, uh, uh, and so we, ever can't have a janitor working some night here because they got sick, we've got two sweepers with, that we could use for sweeping here. Because I hear that word sweep all night there. So it was interesting, but it was very good entertainment. But I want to say, um, we have a lot of activities coming up for the rest of winter here too. We've got the polar plunge. And if you want to get ahold of the Boys and Girls Club, they're looking for, uh, they need a few more people to take the plunge and they'd love to hear from you. So with that, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.